Decisions that are coming in the future with the C I P projects and things that are asking jail EMS, things of that nature. I wanted to give you a procedural timeline to help with this so we can all handle it in organized fashion. If you look at the back of your agenda, you'll see a budget calendar. So, and this doesn't have anything to do with the budget. I just wanted to look in there on the potential work session for January twenty second. In the middle of all that, we'll have received all of our CIPs, things like that. So then we'll be able to discuss how to, we would actually go about borrowing, whether it's a geo bond, a revenue bond, a direct loan, things like that. And kind of go over how procedurally all that would work.
And what date did you say that?
January twenty second. It's a work session.
Okay, so that's not on the sheet.
No, it has nothing to do with the budget. No, I know. It has nothing to do with the budget. This is just my budget calendar, but I wanted to add that into our work session that corresponds with this after we get our C I P and things like that. So we can kind of
And that's
had a plan.
So you want to discuss the C I P then?
Yes, and just kind of have a financial review of how we would borrow if, if as a board y'all decide to build a jail, how we would actually go about getting that money and how everything else of the needs in the county would be. I wanted to just kind of go over how all that financing would potentially work, just so everyone's on the same page.
The issue I've got, my main issue that I've got with this is you've got the commissioner's retreat set in March. At that time, it's all over. Everything's pretty much in the works and all those things. It's kind of like the tail wagging the dog. We ought to be more upfront with our direction so that departments, as they prepare their budgets, are in line with the, the goals of the, of the board. We, we used to have the retreat in January. Last year, we, we carried it back to late February or March. We ended up, it just gets later and later every year. I think that needs to be earlier in the year so that it's more a directive with the other departments as we move forward.
So are you asking me to change the retreat or do you not want to do this finance? Do you, are you asking me to change the retreat schedule and ask the new manager to potentially do that or do you not?
You could combine both things, the retreat and the um
Yeah, this
C I P borrowing discussion into one meeting and they could, early January.
I mean, that would be, the retreat should be sometimes in January rather than March after everything's pretty much in, in order. I mean, if we say we have the retreat in March and we say, well, you know, this isn't our goal. And yet you've already lined up all the departments and got their budgets and all of that, then they've got to go back and redo it.
That was my point of this, so we can
That's what, but we have the retreat.
I, I'm used to having an, an early meeting retreat with the board to reaffirm the county's goals, go over potential revenue sources, kind of like a, a primer for the budget. But then we can then roll the budget process forward. So that would, I mean, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, that's just my, my thoughts. Anybody else? I mean,
No, I agree with you. The retreat needs to be, I agree. He's right about that. The retreat, the retreat needs to be really in January.
Okay.
That's when it really needs to be done. We skipped, we, we pushed it last year into February, but that was really getting late. Because, you know, at the retreat, we set up our goals, what we're looking for, all that sort of stuff. We give direction to uh
Build it. Okay.
Can I ask a question? Why is there a, it says first budget public hearing on January the eighth? Why would you be having a public hearing so early in the budget before it's?
We got complaints several years ago from citizens saying we only offered a public hearing ten minutes before we voted. So we just started doing one in January. I think speak at it over the last eight or 10 years.
So this would be kind of like inviting public comment before the whole budget process is put, pulled together. Okay, I got you.
But it, like I said, it's three minutes on the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, because nobody's ever really participated in that, in that process. But we offer it so nobody can come and say
Right.
We didn't offer an opportunity to speak. Okay, anybody else got anything else on the budget, on the calendar? So what I'm hearing from this is we kind of tend to, we want to work to moving the the work set, I'm working the commissioner's retreat in January. And we'll figure out a date on that as we, we move forward.
So what was it, January twenty second for?
That's, she's gonna, she wanted to have a C I P at our work session to discuss.
They said to work, that's in the evening work session.
That's just like a four o'clock.
Okay, sure.
What we'll do now probably is incorporate that within our, our um
A retreat.
Our retreat.
And not have a work session that month maybe, or still have?
That's possible, yes.
We're going both at the same day?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We just make that one, one, you know, like that's our half day meeting or three o'clock meeting or whatever. We go from nine to three or whatever we need to do to accomplish things on, on that day. And so we would, that would encompass all of those things. Okay, we'll, we'll figure a date on that as we, we'll move forward through December. Okay. All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is probably, uh, that would be at the, the chairs after the chair is, is collected in December. The, the chair would be the one that would, would suggest that date.
Okay, I'll just make it short for you.
All right, next we've got our phase one B water update.
I'll take that one with Mr. Vice Chairman. So the, as the board is aware, you've got a twenty-three point six million dollar overall project budget with which we put out to bid and we're, I think, three point seven million dollars deficit in terms of not having enough money to fund the entire project. Um, initially, the county went forward with the Kettrel water tank restoration. That's under, under process right now. We were waiting the North Carolina General Assembly's budget approval of which Vance County did receive four million dollars toward this project, which should fill the hole of the deficit from when you bid it in April this past year. The question is right now is to whether, um, working with USDA funding, which I guess was approved in twenty twenty-one, July of twenty twenty-one, um, that funding with the state funding, we don't know when the state will release their four million dollars. But I know that Catherine has had discussions with L K C, the, the engineer. Do you want to fill in any other? Where we're moving forward based upon that discussion?
Yeah, they, he suggested that we wait until we get more direction from the state to know exactly when we would get the funding so that at that point we could evaluate the market and see where we are to see whether we negotiate with Reynolds again, our lowest bidder, to see if they would honor it or do we rebid or things like that. But since there's only a thirty day window, he suggests we just wait until we hear get more direction from the state on when that funds will come in.
All right, have we followed up with the state to see when those funds would be available?
I, I haven't, yes, I've tried, but would they, I don't, I haven't heard back yet.
Has Clay had any Bill, Clay, Clay should be able to, Clay Kill should be able to assist us with that. Has she been working on it?
We'll, we'll contact her. Senator Sossman's office is, is, yeah.
Yeah. Clay, Clay with the, with Sossman's office should be able to, to give us some direction on that.
I mean, we don't know the bids being six months old now, whether Reynolds will honor that or not, or we may have to end up rebidding the whole thing.
That was the other thing is I think from what I'm hearing with the road project for the industrial park, we've got like potentially eight bidders. And it may be a more favorable bidding environment. And that's just something we need to talk with our engineers about and evaluate.
Yeah, if you go that route, then this board would need to reject the, the series of bids you received in April, but we'll, um, we'll, we'll evaluate that and bring that back to you. We'll fi- find out on the state funding, the four million dollars when that'll be available and then
And I can reach out to Clay. I just reached out straight to Treasury. So, and I just haven't heard back.
Well, I know
He, they, she might know more. I don't
I know they've been like, you know, Representative Sossman has been with the, the center for, over in Granville County for the, that
He, he will be here on November sixth to do a check presentation on this four million dollars for the water system, as well as to make mention of all the other preparations that were, I mentioned at the last meeting.
Okay, all right. So, uh, when was the, uh, phase four start supposed to begin?
Phase one B?
Yeah, the, what we're talking about right now, phase one B water update, the timeline.
When we
Was it originally, so when did you think it was gonna start?
You were hoping like April or May. You bid in April of
Well, we, we received the funding from USDA in twenty-one. Then we've had hurdles ever since and then we were finally received and then COVID and then everything. And then we finally received, we went out to bid, um, because we secured separate funding in April. So then we were hoping to go to start thirty days after that. And then the budget just blew us out of the water.
Supposed to start in October of last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, April twenty twenty-three, yeah.
But we did get
Since this year.
But we did get approval to do partial, part of it, that being the, the water tank restoration in Kettrel. So that's underway.
Yes, well, that's just something we, you know, we're in environment right now that I think it's, it's probably a positive environment for construction, getting better every day, seems to be. Okay, um, any other comments on the water update? I think the, we know what time Elana might be here.
Yep, we can come back to this.
Yeah.
Let's skip that one and, and then the fire study and let's move down to the detention center update.
All right, so you had a workshop, I believe it was your last workshop, the workshop before that, we went through the, um, didn't update on the Mosley study. And I know Catherine had presented, the finance director presented the different funding options in terms of whether you did the the, the brand new jail, whether you did the addition and the renovation to the existing jail. There's been some very informal conversation about, um, the potential of a regional facility in, in the area. I know the vice chairman had me, had some contact over in Granville County. The, the chairman has, as of this past, um, last week, asked me to reach out again to see if they would be interested in having a conceptual talk or an, an idea, um, per, per se. So I put that in writing to the Granville County Manager Drew Cummings, waiting for, to hear, to hear back from him on that as to whether that is an option. Not that this board has discussed that formally, but again, at the direction of the chair and then former conversation with, with the vice chair, not to say that we, or to say if that we're not, if they would have no interest in that whatsoever, then you're back to the options in the original Mosley study. Either way, it's going to cost Vance County and it's going to cost you, um, big dollars. Pardon me?
What conversation were you referring to?
There, there was an, an informal conversation, um, I, I, with, um, I believe the, the vice chairman with the sheriff and the chair of the Granville County, County Commissioners as to whether a, a regional jail concept would be viable or whether they would be interested in that with, with Vance County. And, um, that really, when I talked to the, the county manager over there, um, he said, he thought the, the conversation was premature at this point in time. Um, based upon some things they were taking care of in their facility, um, and other factors. So we pretty much, pretty much kind of put that to the back burner. And then, but again, I, like I said, the chair brought this up to me as well. So I followed up again with Mr. Cummings and have not heard back yet.
I spoke with him briefly last week with, uh, Mr. Cummings last week. And we realized that this is something that would not occur immediately. But it would, because they, they're doing some transitional things in their, their thing too, but like I said, conceptual conversation is, um,
Shouldn't we be still looking at our own auction if that falls through?
Yes, ma'am.
But shouldn't we still be going ahead and looking at what we need to do concerning?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we, we know that, I mean, if we slap the gavel right now and said we're going to build a new jail, we know it would be five to seven years before the jail would be started. And so we know we've got to do some things in the meantime. And so those kind of things there, definitely we need to, to have some conversation and, and, uh, and, and do some planning.
Conversation being housed in until our jail is built? Trying to get the directions of that.
Conversation about potentially having a regional jail.
Yeah, bringing them together is one.
And, and keep in mind, as I understand it, normally a regional jail, since the, the existing facility is in Granville County, it's a newer facility. It's one that can be added on to easily in terms of additional pods to handle inmates. As I understand it, and I, I could be wrong, but that jail would be under obviously the ownership and control of the sheriff of Granville County and it would be his um, jailers, employees, operating the facility and you would just be leasing bed space in that facility or some type of arrangement thereof.
I mean, at this point, there's been no specific
Correct.
They, you know, they have capacity. Uh, I know their inmate costs right now because they don't have many people in their jail relative to capacity is extremely high and it's a budget consequence to them. So that's why we, like I said, it's something that would be proceeding slowly with, with conversation.
We would have the conversation before it goes anywhere else.
Correct. I mean, it'd be a whole lot of conversation. I mean, if with this were to move forward, our board would have to
Okay.
Be, be, I listen.
If I wasn't aware of the conversation already, so how would you say?
Like I said, it just, somebody had to have a conversation.
It's not really a conversation. This is just one guy talking to another guy. I mean, it's no formal conversation.
There'd been no meetings.
To my knowledge, they have
They're just talking.
To my knowledge, they have not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brummett, they have not necessarily expressed an interest coming to us saying, hey, we would like to do this. It's more us coming to them saying, could we do this? Is this feasible, possible? Conceptual.
Right.
Do you know anywhere that exists, the inter-county that you know of, is this with those regional? Just see that it worked.
There's another one in Easton, North Carolina. Um, yeah.
It was down east somewhere. They've got one
Hyde, Hyde County, yeah.
I think the three counties in that.
Hyde, um.
Well, we, as we go move forward, yeah, I mean, this isn't anything we're gonna, like I said, we're not gonna bring this to the board and vote on it. I mean, this will probably take a year of conversation. Right.
I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something, I mean, we're already mid-stage to even have a, a board discussion on it really at this point.
Throw it into safety committee, tell me go look for it.
I mean, it'll be plenty of time for that. It's anything getting slammed through or anything. Just, like I say, just making the board aware of the conceptual conversation.
Bert, the Bertie Martin Regional Jail.
Bertie.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think it's just two counties, Bertie Martin Regional Jail.
Or just Bertie Martin?
Yes, sir, has, just, just from a quick, um, Looks like it's housed at the Bertie County Detention Center as the
I think so. That's where, um, the, he was president of the association a couple of years ago. All right, so that's, that taken care of, I guess. I guess we'll move back to the fire study at this time. And, uh, I, I believe what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a call in from the representative of the company contracting this thing. And just to make everybody aware, we've invited our fire commission to also attend today. And we have Doyle and Squirrel here and then Carolyn also serves on that commission. And, uh, that was, that's consistent with what our, our board had directed, uh, when we initiated this study. So if you wanna
But we've got a phone to the man?
He's calling in, um, I'm calling in and I guess we'll speak with him on it.
What are we talking about?
About this fire study and the way it seems to be going awry or it's not.
Basically an update on the fire study and any questions you may have there, there.
When we're gonna get it? No, that is, that was you talking? Just
Flip break?
The process right now.
Nearly started?
Okay, let's put you on.
Yes. We assume, but comments we're getting from around.
We have, um, Mr. Frank Blackley with AP Triton on the phone. And I've had a prior conversation with Mr. Blackley, asking him to provide the board an update. And, uh, right now, Mr. Blackley, we have, um, four of the, the seven board members here at this workshop, um, waiting on at least one, at least one other to, to come. But I think the, the vice chairman wanted to go ahead and proceed with an update from your firm. Now, I think they have some questions they'd like to ask at the same time. And just to note, you've also got the, um, three person fire commission from Vance County in attendance with the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. All right. So just a kind of update on the project. It is moving along fairly well. Uh, we've got some sections already completed. Uh, I know I've completed the, uh, section on the I S O review. For that, we also have some of the mapping completed based on, uh, information we received from, uh, so nine one one center for showing all the incident data. Uh, I know some of that is moving along. We are planning a site visit in two weeks and I think you all should, uh, have a schedule as to when we will be with each of you all on that. Um, and, um, so, uh, we have, we're getting some data from some of the, the fire departments. Some have done pretty well. Some of we're, are still, uh, waiting to get some of that information. But overall, uh, we're moving along and, um, like I said, we should be there in a couple of weeks to do our own site. We will be visiting each of the, the volunteer fire departments and the rescue squad at that meeting with you all.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
What, um, what contact have you had with the commissioners and with the fire commission thus far?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
I said, what contact have you had with the county commissioners and the fire commission thus far?
None, sir. We have not spoken to anybody with the county commissioners.
Okay, uh, I'm a little confused. Uh, it was my understanding when we, we passed the, um, motion to allow you guys to do the fire study that you'd be working on the direction of the Board of Commissioners and the Fire Commission. Uh, and there seems to be a whole lot of work that's been done outside of the purview of those, uh, of, of this board and the Fire Commission. And I'm, I'm a little confused by that. Can you explain to me how that happens?
Um, we are, we try to be independent contractors where we're, uh, looking at all of the information and data um, that you all have from either the volunteer fire departments, your I S O information, um, to make our, uh, you know, come up with our ultimate findings and recommendations for you all. Um, I have been able to send some updates, uh, kind of where we are with it to Mr. Elliott um, for that. So that, that's kind of how we, we work with most projects. Um, so I'm not quite sure exactly what you, what else do you need from us, I guess is my question.
Well, I, I believe our instructions were that you would work and coordinate through the Fire Commission and the county or the Public Safety Committee, is that correct?
Right. So, so a question came up initially, um, for the board, Mr. Blackley. I reached out to you and asked you for a schedule because it was being requested and you provided that and I was forwarded to providing to the board. I don't think we, we sent that to the three person fire commission. They had basically your, um, milestones of things that you were, you were working on. I, and I guess my response to the, to Mr. Brummett has been that there has been no recommendations. There's, there's been no material product. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Blackley. There's been no material product yet from this study that would come before the, the, the three person fire commissioner or the commissioners. You're just in a data collection mode. And also in terms of the, the scope of work, that's laid out in the proposal that you made to Vance County that, that's under contract. Is that a correct representation or would you?
Yes, um, yeah, because the way we, we work our projects is once we, uh, gather all the data, we're starting to write those different sections. And those have been dished out to different, uh, uh, associates with AP Triton. And once we get through with that, we do what we call a technical review. And that technical review goes to you all to make sure everything that we have written is accurate, um, with that. So that's kind of how the process runs. And, um, I mean, we're not just gonna come out and report and not have any comments from you all, if that's one of the concerns.
And, and to clarify, I have not received any, anything from AP Triton other than that, that milestone schedule. And I, I don't have any draft sections or anything like that of this report that's being worked on by AP Triton.
That is correct.
Let me have a question. Um, so he, he, he's, he's gonna do a site visit with the volunteer fire department, right?
Right, with the volunteer, as well as you and the other people who
Yeah, I know, we, we schedule. So, and I guess I'm asking, so ha- how, how much have he been in contact with the chief of, of the, the fire belt, the, um, go to mail department more so than who had he been working mostly with when it come to the volunteer fire? He haven't met with the volunteer, right?
No, well
Who have he met?
That's, that's when they're coming at the end of the month. So, so initially, um, AP Triton contacted me wanting to set up a, a, an appointment schedule with all of you as the commissioners, as well as the volunteer fire departments and the rescue squad. I'd asked the clerk to, um, the clerk to the board to arrange those appointments for all of those entities. And, um, I believe from there, the, the work got divvied out a little bit between the clerk and the, um, the county's fire chief, trying to get those scheduled.
So he mean with, um, Chief Wright? Have he been, he hadn't been meeting with Chief Wright?
Mr. Blackley, you have not been meeting with Chief Wright, have you?
Have I had a meeting with Chief Wright? No, I have not.
Have you been committing, communicating with him via email to coordinate all of this collection of data?
Uh, could you repeat the question, uh, Mr. Elliott?
Then he can't understand what we're saying through the microphone.
What, tell me the question.
Have you been communicating with Chief Wright via email in attempting to collect with that?
You've been communicating with Chief Wright via email in an attempt to get the data from the volunteer fire, fire departments?
Yes, if he could work with them, um, to be able to get through some of the data tables. We did ask him about that. We also sent him a, uh, the, I guess, the, uh, a base map that we've got to make sure that all the fire stations in the correct location at the district lines are, are accurate. But that's the only, that's the only conver- that's the only conversations I've had with Chief Wright.
But this is just basic data that you've been collecting, not, you're not asking for their input as to how they think the fires, fire service should be structured or restructured, correct?
Right, it's just trying to get data, um, from each of the volunteer fire departments and rescue squad to look at, you know, what type of equipment do they have, you know, well, I mean, there's lots of other, like, take what type of training are they doing on the day that, you know, a weekly basis? Um, what type of incidents are responding to? Those are the, that's the information that we're needing to do our reports. So we're not having any other conversations with him other than trying to get that data completed.
Okay, that, that becomes an issue, um, in that there was a reason our board said that we wanted to go through the Public Safety Committee and the Fire Commission because we've, we've had some, some issues where we're not comfortable with some of the actions and data that's been, uh, spread about previously. I think you guys are aware that this has been a contentious issue here. And, uh, and that we were trying to protect the integrity of this study.
Right, I, I just want you all to fully understand that AP Triton does not, uh, we don't have any preconceived ideas as to what, what the final report may look like and what our recommendations will be. Uh, because everything is based on what we see and what we find based on the data. Um, and that's, that's how we operate and, uh, any conversations I've had with any of the chiefs is that like, that, that we're here to help you all to basically try and to develop a system that's gonna provide the best services to the citizens in Vance County.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts are that the method that you're going about to collection and the collection of this data is not satisfactory based on the direction our board requested at the beginning of this study.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question or comment.
He was saying, if I can paraphrase, that he doesn't believe that the, the collection method is satisfactory according to Vice Chairman Brummett compared to what he feels the, the board directed via, when they approved the commissioning of the study.
Right, so these are general data tables that we use for all of our reports. There's, there's nothing, uh, new or different for Vance County. Um, they're very generic and the information that we're trying to get is basically to help us write the report. So, um, I mean, that's, that, that's how AP Triton operates and I think probably a lot of other consulting firms too, because we're just trying to gather data.
Okay, um, we, we have parameters that we would like to make sure that you follow as you continue this. And that would be, you can communicate through the manager.
Right.
Following that, that, those processes and that communication, should it be directly with the departments that you're working with? Or it should be, um, coordinated by the manager to go through the Public Safety and Fire Commission?
Right, yeah, that's what, that's what we've been trying to do is work directly with the volunteer departments. Um, you know, to, to get the information that we need. And that's what we'll be doing when we're on site in a couple of weeks. Obviously meeting with you all and then visiting with them because there may be some questions that we still have that we were, that we're gonna collect and we've got a system to do that or, or asking everyone the same questions. So we're not going off and asking one department one thing and someone else something different.
Mr. Blackley, you'll have to excuse me, but I've got a number Mr. Blackley, you'll have to excuse me, but I've got a number of emails that went somewhere other than to, um, chiefs at departments. And I've talked with several of the chiefs and they've, other than the initial meeting you had that was by Zoom, there's been no communication with you directly to these departments. Everything has gone through some other source which was not consistent with what we requested in the beginning.
Well, I know that I've spoken with each of the chiefs or, and/or their, uh, their, I guess their destiny is to, to get the information. So I'm not sure exactly, if, if you can tell me which organization or department that you're talking about, I will be glad to follow up with them.
I believe you spoke with one of them this morning?
Yeah, I spoke with the, uh, the chief of the rescue squad, that is accurate. Yeah, because we spoke, oh gosh, I guess not too long after the project kicked off.
And I'm understanding that there were a couple of other departments that probably have not been communicated with, is that correct?
Hmm, not that I'm familiar with. I think I've spoken with everybody at all of the sessions. If somebody, if there's someone I had that, that feels like they need for me to give them a call, please let me know.
Okay, the, the other issue that, that we have is I, I got a copy of the, the data that you were requesting and it's an enormous amount of data.
Um. Yeah, like, yeah, as I said, these are generic forms that we use for all our projects. And, um, as I told everyone on the kickoff call, I said, if it doesn't apply, just, just skip it or put NA in there because it may not be applicable to Vance County.
Okay, I think there's been some misunderstanding of that. It's still a whole lot of data that needs to be collected.
Yeah, I, I, I do not disagree with you one bit that there is a lot of data, but, you know, part of that is for us to truly try and see exactly what, um, is going on in the county because, you know, for, for, we're working for you. And the whole idea is to look at the, uh, fire service review of the county, determine where it is now and then what we see, see should be, uh, ways to improve it.
Okay, what, what is your, um, how do you validate the data that you obtained directly from the departments?
Um, well, we will ask the questions when we're on site. Um, I mean, some, some information should be, is going to be as simple as, you know, what, what you would organize. Uh, because we're doing a little small section on each of the, the, the departments. Um, and it's, it is based on what information they provide to us. You know, some information maybe such as incident data, we can't get that from, uh, uh, or trying to get some of that information directly from the state if they're unable to export that information to us. Uh, such as we, we've, we've already received a lot of information from the 911 center, uh, that discusses the, the incidents, um, that they're responding to.
Do you cross-reference that data with 911 data?
Yes, sir.
Conversation here with the board. What, um, the direction that we would want to move forward would be that there's an understanding that communication gets through the manager and then to the public safety or fire commission for communication.
Absolutely, however you want to handle it.
My question is, what has transpired that we are not aware of?
What is what?
What has transpired that we are not aware of?
There's, well, a couple of questions, what do we need to be aware of? You know, we've, we brought him on board, the study is to be the honest broker between all of this back and forth that we've been having.
Yeah, sir.
And so until we see their report and we don't have to accept their report anyway when we come, but uh, where I am is telling them, keep charging. We're all on board. Kelly put out something that we all signed up to talk with them. Uh, sometime this month, I think. At the end of the month, they're going to be talking to every commissioner. And that, you say you haven't seen it, so Kelly can send it to you, but they're going to be talking with every commissioner between now and the end of the month. And we'll get a chance to talk to them and see what they've done and what's going on and all of that. But I still look at them as the honest broker to, uh, come forth with a proposal that we may or may not accept uh, based on what they're doing, so.
Are they going on the lines that when we agreed to get them? Are they still on the same baseline or?
Yes, they're still on that for what he's saying.
They, they've been operating through the fire chief. Uh, primarily as their source of communication. Uh, that communication has been, um.
All they're doing is data collecting. When you say operating through, they're not operating, they're just collecting data.
Say again? Excuse me while I speak. Um. There have been different levels of communication with different departments. There are some departments who are not happy with a Dropbox that is out, that has all information available for everybody to see. And so I believe Mr. Blackley probably had a conversation today to that effect and is now going to do some modifications. But due to a lack of communication thus far, there's been some, some issues with, uh, with the way the data is being collected. And so, so that's, that's where we are with that. And, um, I've gotten, say, comments from several different sources indicating that. And we chose at the beginning of this, by vote of this board to put the manager, the public safety committee and the fire commission would be the point of contact in order to achieve these goals. The information was not to be going through the fire chief for communication. They were, we were specific in our format of how we wanted to go about it.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see, uh, how this board, this board is going to collect the data and give it to him.
That's what I'm hearing, we're not collecting.
But I mean, it's safety committed, if they manager and all that, I suppose to collect the data for him and give it to him. He can't go directly and get it. Is that what you?
Not directly to each department, but it's not supposed to go through the fire chief.
A difference without a distinction, I think.
But the differences, the differences between I O C and you. Well, he has the number of the chief and he has the email of every chief.
I, I tell you what, why don't we just have him come in here and, uh, tell us, or the safety committee, go to him and show us how he's collecting data, because what I'm hearing him say on the phone is that this is the standard way they do business. That's what I just heard him say on the phone. Is that right, uh? Hold on. It, uh, what I'm hearing you say is this is the standard way you do business in all your fire studies, is that right?
For sure.
That's what I'm hearing. And so I don't see what's wrong with that. But, because we're going to get a final say anyway.
I think some of us.
Let him do his work the way they normally do it.
When we voted initially to conduct this study, we had a format we wanted to follow and.
And you're saying he's not following that format?
That format has not been followed, um.
Did we get, did we give him the format?
That was communicated by our vote on our board.
Did we give him the format?
Prob- probably not. But.
I mean, he cannot follow a format he doesn't have.
But again, basically, all they were doing was collecting data. Um, at this point, moving forward, we'll make sure there's a firewall between the county's fire department chief and the consultant and keep him on one side of the firewall and, um, uh, uh, regret that, any confusion that he, he may have, him being asked to try to get this data into AP Triton, um, caused. Um, I don't think there's been any, um, manipulation of data or any undue influence that he's tried to make in this process, um, for, for this. I mean, AP Triton is a reputable firm that's going to come up with their recommendations based upon the data plus based upon their onsite verification of that data in interviews, um, of all the factors. And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Mr. Blackley, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Black.
I don't think we attack, we're not, we're not coming against their professionalism. We just coming against, see, this is a different. Our county may be different, having the different issues of what the other counties might have. So it's not about their professionalism, it's just because of the issues that we have, that we want to neutral. And we set up those rules and regulations and go through to make sure that it's not tainted, that it's, it's a fair and accurate report. That's what, we, we're not attacking their professionalism and the way they collect data, but it's just the way it was set up. We had voted to put it in place because of the issues that we have in our county.
So where do we go from here?
Um, the manager said it would, he would give them the correct.
Yeah, I think the, what the vice chairman has stated in terms of, um, uh, uh, making sure that communication goes from the manager's office as well as the, the public safeties and the three-person fire commission moving forward. And I think at this point, moving forward, them using the data and starting to formulate these recommendations in these different parts of the study, this is the, the, the point of the study that is the important part. Um, so we'll make sure that, you know, the, the new manager coming in has that understanding and that that flow of information communication follows that path. And again, the, the firewall concept between this project and the county's fire, um, chief will, will firmly be put in place. Again, I regret any confusion that has been, has occurred.
Good. Anyone from the fire commission have anything? I'm sorry? Needs to be equal community. Could you step up to the microphone so he can hear you?
Can we ask, make sure he's still on the phone, Mr. Blackley?
Mr. Blackley, you still on the phone?
Yes, sir, I am.
Thank you.
Which I talked to Mr. Blackley this morning, first conversation I've had with him since it started other, after the original meeting. And any email I've gotten from then has been from other sources than Mr. Blackley. The first email I got from the county administration was Friday from Ms. Kelly about obtaining information. And there's where my problem lies. From the rescue side to any side, it should have come straight from the company to me. They've got my email, they've got my phone number. And there's other departments in the county that feel the exact same way about it. Uh, so there's no misinterpretation of anything. It goes directly from point A to point B and not, we don't need a middleman. If I need something from a commissioner, I go straight to the commissioner. I don't go to somebody else to get the commissioner to give it to me.
Can you hear that? Okay, Mr. Blackley?
No, bits and pieces of it.
Okay, basically, uh, well, I think what he said was he had spoken to you this morning and most of his communication had come from a source other than that, he said, I believe he got some information from, from Kelly, um, who was our clerk to the board on Friday. Prior to that, all the commission information was coming from various sources. And he would like for the information to come directly from you guys and to be able to contact you and, and he said not spoken with you since the initial meeting until he spoke with you today. There's been no communication directly from you.
Sure, it's, it's, he's asking about the, uh, like the onsite scheduling. Um, typically when we do a project, um, we give that to the, the jurisdiction because they're the ones that are actually there and they're able to communicate back and forth better than we are because sometimes it's like we're going through a third person. Excuse me, um. So that's, is one of the reasons we usually trying to have the local people do that. So, um, but from, yeah, I get it from, from now on, if he needs to, if I need the information from him specifically, I will contact him for it.
And that should be the same for any of the chiefs.
Well, that.
Right, and that's.
Going back to what, what you just said, the third person should be somebody from the county administration, whether it be the clerk to the board or the county manager, not another chief from another department. No matter which department it is.
Did you hear that?
Sir.
Okay. All right, so I believe that, I, I think we're pretty clear on how we'd like things to be communicated going forward. And, um, if anybody else, does anybody else have anything? We appreciate you, your time today. And, uh, and hopefully we can get this, uh, on the right track and proceed forward.
Yeah, well, well, just, just for my clarification, all my communication needs to go through Mr. Elliott and/or directly with the fire chief and or, and/or like you said, it's the fire commission that needs to go through Mr. Elliott. Is that accurate?
The county manager.
The county manager, yeah.
Yeah.
It may not be Mr. Elliott.
Right.
All right, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah. That would, okay, all right, so. All right, that's all we have. If somebody else has anything. Like I said, thank you for, for, um, calling. He knows, he understands that he's supposed to speak with the county manager or he's directly communicate with the chiefs of each individual department. Um, there's a firewall put up based on what our manager just said that the communication will not be coming from the county fire chief. And that's, that's what should be the understanding from this conversation. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, thank you very much and, uh, we will see y'all in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blackley.
Thank you, y'all have a good afternoon.
All right, we have, um, we've done everything except the small business initiative and we have not gone in the closed session if you want to.
Do you want to do the small business initiative?
Yeah.
Before we move on to something else, can you please bring us up to speed on exactly what transpired because I'm listening to this and trying to figure out what, what is going on? So can you please just bring us up to speed on why this conversation?
It appears that the communication from AP Triton has generally been directed through the Vance County Fire Chief rather than. Right.
Okay.
And the intent of the board at the beginning of this was to have communication go through the county manager, the public safety committees or the fire commission and the fire commission elected.
That's the fire commission, huh?
Fire commission is that and Carolyn.
Okay.
Okay. So that was, that was the intent to start with. That process has not been followed. There's been a lot of confusion because of that. And so we needed to get that clarified. And that was the point of the conversation today.
Okay, uh, at this point in time, um, you know, I had another meeting to attend. Um, so we've evidently gone through the finance timeline and stuff, right?
We've done everything, we, we.
And we've gone through, uh, I don't check it from here, Mr. Brummett. Okay, face one, what update we've gone through that, that's, okay, um, number three, have we gone through number three yet? Okay, um, number five, four, well, five, have we talked about this initiative?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay. So basically with the small business initiative, um, I did request that Mr. Elliott put this on for discussion today because that was one of the things, when we had our retreat earlier in the year, that that was one of our goals in terms of, um, one of the accomplishments that we were going to try to have, um, during this coming year. So one of the things I wanted to do is just to see where we are in terms of, um, what initiatives that we have come that we have created or participated in or will participate in as to re- in regards to that particular, um, goal that we had set for the year. And of, of course, we had Vance Granville come and speak to the board, uh, which was recorded for the public about what available, um, business, small business initiatives that they have at the, at the community college. But I just wanted us as a board to just to see whether or not we've, how we've gone about this, the fulfilling the particular goal that we set or were there any suggestions about, uh, how we can go forward in terms of making sure that that is one of the things that we accomplish in terms of that goal?
So, Madam Chairwoman, my understanding is the board appropriated money in this year's July 1 budget for this initiative.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, to my knowledge, there's been no, no actual work on this so far, but we were coming before you today to get your input for some direction as to, um, again, I wasn't here for the prior discussion with the Vance Granville. Is that organization?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, this is the $15,000 that we put into the budget to be able to help with small business in accompanying with Vance Granville and our local bank and things like that. Um, and what. Um, and what, we don't know how to spend it. So we were coming, and this might be too long of a discussion for today's workshop if we want to create something, um, on how you want us to do that. Do we want to set it up in grants? Do we want to set up a committee? Do we want to give it to all one person or do we, one community? You know, uh, we just don't know how you or the board, excuse me, um, would like us to proceed with this. So I didn't, that's what we were coming to see what your thoughts and, um, what style of projects you want this to take care of or help. So I think it might be a bigger discussion than we might have time for today, but I just.
Before we get there, I would like to find out from the county, from the people, like we had the Vance Brown, the Annuos Gateway, that I would like to know who is this, this small business people that, because everyone I asked, you talked to about, you know, people will come to me and I'll reach out to Vance Brown and I'll reach, reach out to Gate City, but nobody ever has no money to give anybody. So I want to know where is the people that we supposed to talk to to help the people in the small um, business? Because every time if I go there, call them or talk to somebody, nobody ever has no money. So where is the money? Who has the money that can, people can go to could actually help them? I would like to know the names of these organizations in Vance County that can help people. See, because nobody, I mean, those two, I never seem to help me get direction to help somebody.
Okay. Well, I'll pull all that together and we'll put it on next month. If that's okay with you. That's fine. Okay.
I would like to know who can apply for.
We, I don't know. That's what.
That's what you're trying to set up.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Like we don't, we all as a board haven't set up the parameters on what you would like to see, how you would like to see the money worked, but anything. So that's what I want to set up. That's what I want to get y'alls input and set up so that we have time to implement this before the end of the budget year.
Okay. If you can just go ahead and get that and that, that would give us, us a start and then try to decide how we want to spend the 15,000 towards, um, the small business initiative that, you know, that was set out in terms of one of our goals for this.
And I've reached out some other, um, how our, how the bank sets it up, how the community college, you know, their guidelines and parameters. So I have that to present as well. So we can kind of work through that at the next.
Okay, that'll be fine. Okay, now, um, we have a closed session, personnel matter.
$3,000, you just talked about, is that for small businesses owners or anybody or?
Again.
It was considered.
We have established.
Yeah.
But that was the intent, I believe, was to be small business.
It's to be determined.
And that was one of the reasons why, you know, we wanted to look at it today, just to see if anybody had any specific suggestions that they wanted to put forward as to what they feel, figure would be a good fit, you know, for this particular. And I can't never find no money for nobody. Nobody never got none. Will be a 15,000 set aside by the board for that purpose, you know, whether or not we want to work in conjunction with NC Works or any of the, of community development agencies. I believe economic development, they look more at the bigger projects. But something that we can initiate that will help the small businesses in this area. That's what we, you know, one of our goals was, one of our focuses is for, and we do have funding set aside for that purpose. But when people ask me, and I'll reach out too. That's why I said, well, who got the money? Y'all ain't never got none. So tell me where it is. Okay. So, um, does someone want to make a motion to go in closed session? The motion has been made to be going to closed session. It's been properly seconded. All those in favor? Some of your opposition?